And thank you for attending. I don't know who ordered this temperature, but here you go. We'll try to be effective and efficient so that we won't have to sweat any more than possible. So first of all, I would like to thank all the town and school staff who have worked to make this meeting work effectively and efficiently. In addition, I would like to acknowledge and thank all the staff and volunteers that serve this town and who have done extraordinary things on all our behalf to keep us safe, while keeping the many functions of the town operating in town hall, the schools, the library, the transfer station, and all the things that we depended on. This has been a year that has tried us all. With the rap of the gavel, the Acton Legislative Session is in order, and you are all legislators. It is the culmination of a year or more of preparation by volunteer committees and boards, appointed and elected, that bring these articles to this session for your discussion and vote. We have had a year like no other, with so many acts of kindness and caring shown to each other throughout our community, punctuated with divisiveness and anger. In this session, we will conduct the business of the town by discussing ideas, not people, and despite the size of this body, I think we can be more efficient and effective than our smaller elected legislatures. I hope that you can assume that everybody is here with good intent, even if you don't agree. We are neighbors, and we'll continue to be neighbors after this meeting. Many thanks to Bill Mullen for serving as temporary moderator in the outdoor section of the meeting. As we proceed through the warrant, we'll be going back and forth between the two areas to recognize speakers. In addition, two people are observing closely and may serve as temporary moderators at a future meeting. If you are interested in learning more about doing this, please email me through the town website. In addition, there are many volunteer boards and committees that need members. Please see the volunteer application at the back of the warrant for more information. So when it comes time to discuss, please use the microphone that is closest to you. We don't have pro and con this time. If you are not able to stand or approach a microphone, raise your hand, and one of the tellers will bring a microphone to you. If you're not, like, if it's not happening, just wave more, and I'll try to see you or Bill outside, and we'll get a microphone to you. So then, no matter how you're at the mic, when I recognize you, please state your name and street before making your comment or asking your question. Keep in mind that you are officially speaking to me, the moderator, though of course, your comments and questions are for the benefit of everyone. This is designed to keep the temperature down and keep the meeting flowing smoothly or moderated. If you have questions, I will recognize the person most appropriate to answer. You will have two minutes to speak. The moderator will accept a motion to cut off debate or move the previous question once there has been sufficient debate to inform the town meeting members of the pros and cons of the motion. You may not make a statement and then move the question. You may only move the question. Moving the previous question requires a second, is non-debatable, and requires two-thirds majority to pass. In the absence of a motion to move the previous question, following a robust discussion, the moderator may determine, usually through a show of hands, that most of the voters have decided how to vote, and the vote will be taken at that time. Voting will be by a combination of voice and holding up the large colored card. The tellers will assist if a count is necessary. We will have at least one speaker who is not a resident, maybe a couple, who are not residents of Acton, who will present or answer questions related to the articles. At this time, I would ask for your consent to hear from non-residents. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll now begin with introductions. I'll recognize Mr. Benson to introduce the select board.
Good evening. On my far right is Jim Snyder-Grant. On my immediate right is Joan Gardner, our senior member, who will be completing 14 years of service over four decades this evening. Our vice chair, Dean Charter, and our clerk, David Martin.
And I would like to acknowledge, once again, the many years of service that Joan Gardner has given to the town and wish her well. She's moving to a place by the ocean. If we could bring an ocean up here, I'm sure she'd stay. And also, my heartfelt farewell to John Benson, who's served a three-year term and will not be returning to the board next year. Thank you for your guidance over this last three-year period. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Wait a minute. Chrissy.
Good evening. It's easy to forget both the impact of the uncertainty that pervaded our lives back in March and April of 2020, and the speed of the collective response and resourcefulness which carried us forward. Thank you to our town staff, our public safety officers, our first responders, whose normal work continued unabated, while many also saw new duties increase significantly; to our teachers who adapted on the fly and did everything possible to maintain Acton's excellence in education and support for its student population; and to you, our residents, who allowed us to achieve a 99% real estate tax collection rate, which accounts for 92% of our municipal revenue; to the local businesses that flexibly shifted their services to better serve the community; to the employees in our grocery stores who were there for us day in and day out; and to all the front-facing employees in the public and private sectors. As a community, we demonstrated remarkable patience. We looked out for each other, including thousands of contacts with seniors to make sure they were safe. We social-distanced and wore masks, always thinking about the well-being of others. Who would have thought we could have held two successful town meetings in a parking lot? And here we are again this evening. We proved remote participation was effective and often a positive experience. The pandemic has forced us to reevaluate what matters individually, for our families, and at the town level, and hopefully it will serve as a guide to the next generation of town leaders. Thank you.
I'll now recognize Ms. Anderson, chairperson of the Finance Committee.
Hello. I'm going to quickly introduce the Finance Committee, who has chosen to sit outside in this very hot weather. Outside, we have Steve Noon, Jason Cole, Adam Noldy. Christine Russell is in here with me. Outside again, we have Sahana Perohit, Mike Majors, Woland Borden. Dave Wellenkopf is not here this evening, and I am Kristi Anderson. I am here to present an overview of the town's financial condition. One second.
Could we have the slides for the financial position?
I will tell you about it, I promise.
Not that.
Yes, thank you. Okay. The town's finances are strong. The town and the school district have maintained their AAA bond ratings, allowing them to borrow at low rates. This saved us a lot of money in the recent bondings of the twin school building and the North Acton Fire Station. The tax collection rate is healthy, and the reserve position is also healthy. Reserves are high, and as you can see, their use has stabilized over the past few years. Note that because of accounted-related timing, we are actually going to be discussing the 2020 column in this chart, even though we're talking about the budget for fiscal year Other presentations will address each budget in detail, so I will stay at a high level, as you see here. Last year's pandemic-related expenses were mostly covered by the state and federal governments. Those that weren't were handled within the fiscal year '21 budgets. They were largely one-time expenses, so do not have much of an ongoing effect on budgets. In response to last year's large tax increase, the town and district brought in budget increases below 3%. Now, 3% is an important number, because it is how much the property tax levy naturally grows, minimizing the potential need for an override. Main expenses for the town and school district are people, so watching compensation growth is a good way to see what is going on. After years of greater than 4% growth, the town's budgeted compensation increase is 3.29%, and the school districts is 3.6%. These are much more sustainable numbers. Along with other expenses, this works out to a town operating budget increase of 2.69% and an ABRSD Acton Assessment increase of 2.99%. The Minuteman Assessment is up a whopping 28.26%, but it is important to remember that this increase is on a comparatively small number. You will hear more about the very interesting cause of that in the Minuteman presentation. Note that this number should drop to a sustainable increase level in 2024. Here are the revenue sources for fiscal year '22 compared to last year. Unsurprisingly, property taxes go up a lot, because that is where the town gets most of its money. With the uncertainty of the pandemic, the town has been conservative about how much money to expect from the next two categories. The budget does not assume the usual increase in state aid, and it protects the small decline in local receipts due to things like people eating out less and buying fewer new cars. Payments of our old debt exclusions have gone down a little, and some will be paid off soon. But we finished borrowing for the North Acton Fire Station, the borrowing was completed this year, at rock-bottom rates, and payments for the twin school and the new Minuteman building went up a little. The last two columns there look a little interesting, and they show the change in how reserves are being used. While this budget uses close to the same amount of reserves as last year, the use of free cash was limited to ensure that it stayed close to an industry-recommended floor of 3% of the total budget, including assessments. This level lets the town respond to emergencies while maintaining a strong bond rating. In order to maintain that healthy free cash level and minimize taxpayer money that is being held for no specific purpose, the Capital Stabilization Fund is being used for the first time. As you might recall, this was previously referred to as a rainy-day fund, but it was actually limited to capital uses when it was created in 2016. It has been sitting untouched since then. The town's creation of a 10-year capital improvement plan makes this the perfect time to start using that money in a planned way. After last year's significant tax increase, the Acton Leadership Group agreed to not raise taxes as much as it could have. As a result, the tax increase is below the amount allowed by Proposition 2.5, with the tax bill for the average single-family house increasing by $408. The Finance Committee would have liked no increase at all, but that would have used a dangerous amount of reserves or required a significant cut in services. The unknown economic impact of the pandemic makes revenue planning a challenge. Fortunately, the federal government has provided financial support for the town to use over the next two years. Despite that help, it is more important than ever that the town maintain a vigilant watch on the financial health of its citizens to ensure that tax increases are affordable. While we are happy to see use of the Capital Stabilization Fund, the town should develop a plan on how to use this resource and how or whether to replenish it. While the future is more uncertain than usual, the town's financial outlook is good. The continued high collection rate, the forthcoming federal support, and the town's 10-year capital improvement plan make it easier to project realistic budgets for the next few years. Between that and the responsible use of reserves, there is no reason to expect an override anytime soon. The fiscal year '22 budget represents a return to students in school full-time and town buildings being opened. It does not include any new programs and no services were cut, all of this while keeping the town in good financial shape for the future. The town and the school district worked very hard to make that happen in spite of pandemic-related unknowns. We would like to thank them for their hard work.
Thank you. It isn't necessary to applaud for each thing. In fact, probably we shouldn't. From here on out, let's just do the business. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Those are the items marked in the front table of contents. How this will work is I will make the motion and read down the list of numbers and titles. If two or more people wish to discuss them separately, please call out "hold," and then we'll take them up separately. Once we've gone through the list, we'll vote the items that are left on the agenda and then return to the items that were held, if any. Mr. Benson moves that the town take up the 21 articles in the consent calendar on pages 32 and 69 through 84 of the warrant, Article 1 and Articles 20 through 39 inclusive. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. This requires two-thirds to pass. Article 1, Choose Town Officers. Article 20, Amend General Bylaws: Terminology of the Select Board. Article 21, Amend General Bylaws: Department Revolving Funds. Article 22, Real Property Disposition: 26 Carlyle Road. Article 23, Budget Transfer. Article 24, Authorize Collective Bargaining Agreement. Article 25, Commuter Lot and Station Maintenance. Article 26, Septage Disposal Enterprise Fund. Article 27, Transfer Station and Recycling Enterprise Budget. Article 28, Sewer Enterprise Budget. Article 29, Ambulance Enterprise Budget. Article 30, Transportation Enterprise Budget. Article 31, Revolving Fund Budgets. Article 32, Hear and Accept Reports. Article 33, Authorize Easements. Article 34, Highway Reimbursement Program: Chapter 90. Article 35, Insurance Proceeds. Article 36, Gifts or Grants. Article 37, Federal and State Reimbursement Aid. Article 38, Performance Bonds. Article 39, Sale of Foreclosed Properties. Seeing that no articles were held out, we'll vote them as a group. All who are in favor, please hold up your cards and say aye.
Aye.
It looks fairly unanimous in here. What is the count outside, Mr. Mullen?
I didn't hear you say no, so...
Okay. I will, I will, I will hold on. So if you are in favor, you can put your card down. All who are opposed, say nay and hold your card up. Okay, no votes in here?
It's unanimous here in favor.
Thank you. It passes by the two-thirds, clearly by the two-thirds majority. Now we will move back to Article 2, Town Operating Budget. Mr. Benson moves that the town appropriate $36,617,835 to be expended by the town manager to fund the fiscal year 2022 municipal budget. And to meet this appropriation, $36,178,835 be raised from general revenues and $439,000 be transferred from free cash. And that the town authorize the town manager to lease on such terms and conditions as he may determine vehicles and equipment for a period not to exceed five years, and to sell, trade, or otherwise dispose of vehicles and equipment being replaced, and to expend any proceeds so received. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Benson, you have six minutes.
Thank you. Through the hard work and innovation of town manager John Manjirati and town staff, we have persevered through a once-in-a-lifetime health crisis. Beginning in March 2020, budget controls were implemented, including hiring and spending freezes. These controls resulted in substantial expense turnbacks at the end of the June 30, 2020 fiscal year, which helped to shore up our reserves. However, these controls left many positions unfilled, and many normal expenses and programs were deferred or discontinued. The Select Board is very proud of the way all our employees have met these challenges and have continued to provide excellent services to our community. The town received from the federal government a direct allocation of CARES coronavirus relief funds of just under $2.1 million. These funds were utilized among the town, the regional school district, and the Minuteman Vocational Regional School District to cover all unbudgeted expenses necessary in responding to the pandemic. This included funding for a community food program the schools undertook to address food insecurity issues in town, and a rental assistance program and a mortgage assistance program created by the town to aid households and property owners. As the pandemic was declared a federal disaster, the town was able to gain reimbursement from FEMA for many of our response expenses. As a result of this funding support and the financial controls imposed, John Manjirati is projecting a turnback at the end of the June 30, 2021 fiscal year, which will again replenish our reserves. Recently, we were notified the town will receive $7.1 million under the American Rescue Plan Act in direct relief to help support our response and recovery efforts over the next three years. Details are forthcoming on how these funds may be used. A further note to the community, in FY '20, we provided $603,618 in exemptions for property tax relief to residents, a 90% increase over the last five years. For those Acton residents 60 and older, the Senior Worker Program increased the hourly compensation rate to $15 per hour and eligible hours of work per fiscal year to 110. Mental health resources were increased for our professional and highly-regarded police department. The entire department trained in mental health first aid through an eight-hour class, and 80% of the department trained 40 hours in crisis intervention training and collaborates with Elliot Mental Health Services. Through a relocation of staffing resources in several department budgets, a sustainability director's position was created to build on the groundswell of support for a greener, more resilient community. In Article 3 this evening, there is a request for $85,000 from free cash to address issues surrounding diversity, equity, and inclusion. The request includes a needs assessment and recommendations for the preferred way of incorporating a diversity officer's position into the town's organizational structure. The recommended operating budget for municipal operations for FY '22 is $36,617,835, a 2.82% increase over FY '21. As set out in the above slide, the total municipal operating budget, including subsidies of $375,000 to the ambulance and transportation enterprise funds, approved in Articles 29 and 30 respectively, is $36,992,835, a 2.69% increase over FY '21. Please note for Article 2, the requested amount town meeting will be voting on is $36,617,835 for municipal operations. The proposed budget is consistent with the Finance Committee's recommendation to limit the operating expense increase. For FY '22, the Select Board and the town manager will maintain and improve upon our current level of municipal services and continue with additional efficiency measures, such as aggressively pursuing grants for capital expenditures. These measures, together with fiscally responsible efforts of town management, shall allow us to continue to offer exceptional services, maintain the town's AAA bond rating, eliminate our $16.1 million OPED liability in less than 13 years, and for Acton to thrive as a vibrant, diverse, and desirable place to live, work, and play. Thank you, and please support Article 2.
Thank you. The Finance Committee recommendation?
Yes, I represent the speaker at the front microphone.
The Finance Committee believes that this is a good budget for our current circumstances. Services are maintained. Capital expenses only increase minimally while doing what needs to get done. It also has a more sustainable compensation increase than in the past. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Thank you. The floor is now open for town meeting members. I recognize the speaker at the front microphone here.
My name is Pamela Covert. I live at 2 Flag Road in Acton, and I think the budget is way over too much, and the federal government should not be involved in Acton's budget. I think that Acton residents should pay taxes to take care of the town.
Thank you. Are there any speakers outside?
No, Madam Moderator.
Seeing no other speakers, we will vote. This requires a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye and raise your cards.
Aye.
I believe we have a clear majority inside.
Thank you very much.
Do we have a clear majority outside?
Madam, are you going to ask for the...
Oh, sorry. It's overwhelming inside. So I'll say, all who are opposed, please say, raise your card or say nay.
Nay.
It's overwhelmingly in favor.
Okay, thank you. Overwhelmingly in favor, it does pass. Article 3, Town Capital Infrastructure Studies and Improvements. We will do this article in similar fashion as the consent calendar in the CPA articles, if you've been here before for those. I will read the motion and then read down the list of items. If two or more people wish to hold them out, they should call out "hold." And there are two motions with this article, so first we'll take the first half or the top part that you see in your warrant. Mr. Martin moves that the town transfer from free cash and appropriate the following amounts for the purposes set forth in Items A through D of the article, including costs incidental and related thereto. A, Diversity Officer Study and Implementation, $85,000. I hear a "hold" on that. B, Tree Assessment, $30,000. Is there another "hold"? No. C, Dog Park Grant Match, $21,000. I hear a couple of "holds" on that. D, Vacant Storefront Program for $20,000. Thank you. I think there was only one on that. So we will now vote on Items B and D. This does require a majority... Yes, a majority on the top half.
Do you want me to put the presentation on the rest?
Oh, yes. Sorry. Yes, we will. Mr. Martin, to your motion.
I'm about to present them.
Do you have a point of order, ma'am? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for coming out on such a hot evening. These capital items are the smaller capital items, the ones we don't have to borrow for, and these come out of two different funding sources. I'm going to go over all of them, even though... I'm going to go over all of them, even though we're voting in two different motions. The first four, two of which have been held, are funded from free cash. I'll be going over all of these individually briefly. And the rest of them are funded, are supposed to be funded from our capital stabilization So Item A requests $85,000 to fund the implementation of the recommendations from the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission. This involves the Select Board receiving the report of recommendations from the DEIC, the Select Board deciding on the policy priorities from those recommendations, and a consultant would be hired to figure out how to incorporate those recommendations in the policy into town government, and finally to recruit for a diversity officer. Item B requests $30,000 to continue with our tree inventory. The tree inventory inventories all trees in our street right-of-ways. The inventory includes the size of the tree, its health, whether or not there is a risk from the tree. Item C requests $21,000 as a grant match to construct a dog park. Item D is to address the vacant storefronts that we have in town. There are about eight vacant storefronts on Great Road. This is a program, along with the state, that provides matching funds from the town. The state provides $10,000 in tax credits to a business that moves into a vacant storefront, and this would fund the $10,000 grant matches from the town in loans which are forgivable if the tenant stays in the location for five years. There's enough money in this item to have two such grants. Item E requests $90,000 for sidewalks. We have sidewalk construction in almost every annual town meeting budget. This year's is a little bit smaller than some years because there are sidewalks being constructed as part of intersection redesigns. The town has a very old brush chopper that has both operational and safety problems. Item F proposes $70,000 to replace the brush chopper. Item G is to begin a net zero vehicle replacement program. The town would like to replace all of its vehicles with either low emission or no emission vehicles over 10 years. This kicks that off by replacing two large SUVs with two new vehicles. One is a hybrid half-ton pickup truck for use by the DPW. The other is for an all-electric car to be used by various departments for things like onsite inspections. Item H proposes $50,000 for complete streets work. The town has a complete streets program, and this money would fund things like crosswalks and bike lanes. Item I proposes a fire alarm system for our existing fire stations to connect them to the town's fire alarm network. The three existing fire stations are currently, there is no alarms in them, and they're unprotected when the firefighters from that station are out on call. Item J proposes $50,000 for the town's sustainability program. This includes maintaining our greenhouse gas inventory, installing electric vehicle car chargers, things like planting trees at Jones Field, and funding to seek grants and improve our acquisition of equipment so that we're able to incorporate sustainability best Item K proposes $30,000 to replace older accident extraction tools for the fire department. The older gas-powered tools have emissions, and the newer electric ones don't, and they're also unencumbered by umbilicals. The DPW department has a very old forklift that has safety problems. Item L requests $30,000 to replace the forklift. And finally, Item M requests $25,000 to replace the 10-year-old computers in our police cruisers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Finance Committee position?
I'll recognize the speaker at the front microphone.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee treated the different items in this article also as a consent calendar, and though a couple of items were held for further discussion, in the end, each entry was recommended. Topics that were discussed while the different entries were held include a preference not to have new employee positions originate in capital articles, and a dislike for using the stabilization fund for items to routinely appear at annual town meeting. Given the circumstances of this past year and a compromise to get to ALG consensus for this budget cycle, the Finance Committee asks for those observations to be noted and remembered, but does indeed recommend this article. Our committee also took up the non-binding dog park petition out of order in comparison with the warrant, and though it was a closed vote, the appropriation of the money was approved. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. We'll now take a vote on Items B and D. Tree Assessment, Vacant Storefront, that's all you're voting on for, on this vote, does require a majority to pass. All who are in favor of the two items, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who is opposed, please say nay. There is a clear majority inside?
There's a clear majority out here, Madam Moderator.
Okay, the two items have passed. On Item A, I believe there is someone ready to speak to that item outside.
Yes, I represent, I recognize the speaker at the front microphone.
I am Charlie Cadlec, Paul River Road, and I will be soon joined by this lady right there. That's you.
Yes.
I got up. Here, tell me your name.
I'm Ann Ching. I live on Billings Street in South Acton.
We are here to tell you why we urge you to vote no on this item. I'll make it very simple, very brief. If you turn to page 34 of the warrant, you will see the description which David Martin read earlier. When I first read it, I passed over it reading just to the warrant, and a little bit later I looked at it and said, $85,000 for a study? That seems odd. So I asked our town manager to give me some idea of what the money is for. He did. He wrote to me that $35,000 would be used for a study, and the remainder, which is $50,000, would be used to basically pay for a new employee. Now, hiring a new employee has always been done a little bit differently, and we'll go into it. So I confirmed what I thought I was hearing, that we will be hiring this diversity officer at roughly $100,000 a year if we pass this article. I don't think many people realize that, and I think it's the wrong way to do it. The Diversity, Equity, and Immersion Commission has yet to file their report. We don't know what it is or what it will be, but we're going to vote the money for it? Why? Why do we need an outside consultant to define the job? We have a human resources department, that's what they do for all the other employees. Ann, you want to add something?
Oh, I had a different take. Okay. This article asks for $85,000 for diversity officer study and implementation. We are being asked to fund part of a person and a set of recommendations that we have not seen, discussed, had a chance to understand, or agree to. For me, this is backwards. The DEI Commission's report is due out this fall. I have no idea what is in this report, and if we, as a town, will be capable of following the recommendations. Before we vote any funds, we need to see the report. We need to have a town-wide discussion. We need to understand what we will be asked to do, and most important, we need to determine if, in fact, the town will be able to do what is being asked. Looking at the Acton Policy Against Racism developed November 12, 2020, we are asked to listen with humility to those who have suffered racism. We are asked to understand systemic racism and the history of racism in the U.S., and how it impacts and is still with us. This sounds to me like a college course, or perhaps even a college major. The objectives of this policy include the town's actions, budgets, bylaws, hiring policies, and purchasing decisions, which will consider to strive and advance DEI. I understand these words, but their meaning is vague. Don't we already adhere to the EOE requirements in hiring? Don't we adhere to the state regs when purchasing materials? The town will oppose systemic racism in our community by implementing communication practices, other strategic and best practices. Does this mean we are going to talk racism away? Most important, informed by recommendations from the town's DEIC, the board will take specific actions, but we don't have this vital report. It's too fast. Implementing plans should involve the selectmen, the town manager, town boards committees, and members of the public. The annual review should include community stakeholders. We have an annual town meeting every year. We are not ready to implement any of these recommendations of the DEIC because we have not seen them. Let's hold off and get the report and make it public, have a thorough discussion, and then see if we, next year's budget, we should pass it. Please vote no against this one.
Thank you.
Let me add briefly, do you still have a little time?
You have 10 seconds.
10 seconds. Vote no.
To be clear, those two speakers asked for time to make that point. Now we'll go to the town meeting members in the front microphone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My issue, actually, somebody was already covered, is a question of process. When I read this article, what disturbed me is we talk about waiting for recommendations, but we're already implementing solutions, the solutions we may have not even identified. So I have no idea what I'm voting for, and I, quite honestly, I'm very disappointed in the Select Board because they're making presumptions. We identified a committee, we have not seen the recommendations. This sounds like we already know what the recommendations are, so let's spend the money and hire somebody. I think that's putting the cart further than we're worth. It's an inappropriate process. I think this should be deferred. I strongly urge you to vote no on this ill, well-intended but very ill-advised use of our money.
Thank you. Is there a speaker outside?
Yes, I represent the lady at the front microphone, please.
Hi, Stella Coe, 11 Guswood Road. Racial Justice for Black Lives, RJ4BL, is committed to raising awareness of racism, of racism, injustice, and violence against black lives, and to advocating boldly for actions leading towards systemic change. One such action RJ4BL advocates for is the creation of a diversity officer position in Acton. Acton has indeed become a more diverse community in recent decades. One might think that such incredible racial, religious, linguistic, cultural, and national diversity is indicative of a lack of problems to be solved. Equity and inclusion are not guaranteed by the existence of diversity in a population or organization. In fact, these are the most challenging issues to address, so we must examine whether Acton's diverse populations are experiencing equity and inclusion. Do all who live and/or work in Acton feel that their contributions, presence, and perspectives are valued? Do all of Acton's residents, visitors, and employees have access to the resources and opportunities they need to fully participate in the community? Do we see Acton's richly diverse demographic represented in the offices at Town Hall, in our police department, in the classrooms and administrative offices of our schools, on our volunteer boards and committees? Do our richly diverse residents feel like they belong while living, doing business, working, shopping, and recreating here? Action is needed. Barriers need to be identified and removed. Biases need to be confronted and eliminated. We all benefit from ensuring that everyone feels a sense of belonging, because people who feel they belong and matter become contributing members of the community, giving of themselves in their own unique way. RJ4BL urges town meeting to action. Please vote yes to approve this funding for diversity officer study and implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at the back microphone inside?
Nijan Datta, Wendt Drive. Three weeks ago, James Carville, former advisor to President Clinton, said, quote, "Every movement starts out as a cause, morphs into a business, and ends up a racket." Part of this diversity training stuff has hit the racket stage, unquote. A most timely statement from Mr. Carville as we discuss Article 3A. This article was drafted by one person on the DEIC with the assent of the chair. The other members of DEIC were not consulted on what this position entails. I know because I attended that Zoom meeting. So at a minimum, there has been no formal buy-in from other committee members on this article. This article is a conclusion in search of a reason. $35,000 is a one-time charge for a consultant to make a, quote, "needs assessment." Is there a consultant in the entire diversity industry who is going to come back with a statement saying Acton does not need a diversity officer? Carville's comment about the diversity racket tells us no such consultant exists, so at a minimum, we can dispense with the consultant and debate the remaining $50,000. That $50,000 is the second half of the fiscal year, so it's really $100,000, which means about $140,000 when you throw in the benefits. And that is only the start of this racket. Given that the terms diversity, equity, inclusivity are never defined clearly and are, in fact, purposely nebulous, there is no quantifiable goal that can be measured and success declared. The diversity officer self-preservation requires that the town be constantly reminded about its racism, sexism, one phobia or another, with endless exhortations to have that conversation and confront our biases. Government jobs are easy to create but impossible to destroy. This is only about this one position, so we won't go into the details of what the philosophy, which divides rather than unites, and racializes everything, and flips Martin Luther King Jr.'s famous dictum on its head. We can go on and on about this terrible philosophy, but for today, what we need is to stop the waste of taxpayer money by saying no to Article 3A. Remember what James Carville said, "This movement has morphed into a business and is now a racket." Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a speaker outside?
Yes, I represent, recognize the gentleman at the back microphone.
Thank you, Dave Lunger, Wompanoag Drive. This is a hiring article for a $100,000-per-year town position. The lack of detail makes this a cart before the horse situation. Where is a detailed job description? Where? A detailed job description is a typical human resources staple. We're hiring somebody, so where is it? All I see here are three nebulous bullets that all apply to a consultant, and none that gives any specifics to this new officer. Is this a job where we figure out the details of what they'll do only after we put taxpayers on the hook for paying them? I cannot vote yes for a blank check to a new town position to do I know not what. I advise voting no on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll recognize the speaker at the front microphone inside?
My name is Pamela Covert, and I think Acton should not have a diversity program. I think that we are Americans, and Americans should live in Acton, not Chinese people taking over.
Thank you. Your comments?
I think Acton is a very nice town as it was.
Your comments? That's enough. Speaker outside, please.
Just outside here. I'm generally going to go backwards and forwards, and so if you don't try to game the system to be better, just line up, and we'll go back. But I'll take the speaker at the front microphone.
Hi, I'm Robyn Tolkowski, 169 Main Street. I just wanted to give a little history. I've lived in town for over 35 years now, and I was a part of many different iterations of looking at the issues of of looking at the issues of racism, inclusiveness, appreciation of differences from the Human Rights Council, which at one point was recognized by the Board of Selectmen. No one in Town Hall remembers that now. I went and tried to revive memories last year, and no one had any recollection of it. I started a group called Mosaic, where we looked at trying to teach people to appreciate differences. There was no place for hate. We have had many iterations in this community to look at the issues of diversity. I urge that you support this because we need finally a formal way of looking at what's going on in our community. I also raised an African-American in this community, and I can tell you from personal experience, there were not many instances of overt racism, but what I called, he was killed softly many, many times within the schools, within the community. Please, support this.
Thank you. I'll recognize the speaker at the back microphone inside.
Leo Faschman, Ray Terrace. I'm holding up Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission charge from August 11th, 2020. In there, it says the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission is charged with assessing diversity, equity, and inclusion in Acton and suggesting ways to improve any problems found. We don't have the report yet. Repeating what the other speakers have said, we're putting the cart before the horse. We're supposed to see this report in September. Once we see the report, we can discuss it, the select board can discuss it, others, and we can see if this is really needed. But for now, let's wait for the report. Please vote no.
Thank you. A speaker outside?
I recognize the gentleman at the back microphone.
Thank you. Scott Myers, 382 Central Street. First of all, there is no place for racism in Acton, either on a personal level or in any businesses or in any schools or any of our institutions. I mean, that's clear, and I think a lot of this gets misinterpreted. I don't think we need a new employee. I watched the school committee meeting from June 10th, and at that meeting, there was a DEI family advisory presentation. And these were volunteers from the community. They came up with some common sense ideas, and they seemed to be well-meaning and could make a lot of difference as far as hiring a more diverse staff at the school or in the community in general, and also ways to make them stay and work in our schools for a longer period of time. It made sense. Let's advertise on LinkedIn. Let's go to some HBCUs and try to find some candidates there. But on the other hand, they had recommendations about a book list, which they didn't get into. And that's where things get dangerous, and a lot of parents will not agree on what books are the right books to read. When we get a coffee maker, it comes with instructions. When we have children, we get no instructions. Everybody raises their kids their own way, and that's a very personal and one of the most important choices that we can have. And what DEI has become is a way to put a wedge between parents and their children and not be inclusive and not be equal. It is a very bad — it's leading to some more divisiveness in our community than before we had an Assistant Superintendent of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. So think about that before you vote. I am disappointed we don't have clickers for voting today.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at the back microphone inside?
Hello. My name is John Covert, and I stand here to ask you to please not consider the comments of my wife, regardless of how you think you might want to vote on this. My dear beloved wife, whom I met 52 years ago and married 48 years ago, this January was subject to an improper adjustment of her psychiatric medication, and she has lost her mind. And there was never the slightest racist bone in her body before January of this year. And I have to apologize for you and beg your forgiveness. Thank you.
Thank you. A speaker outside?
I have a speaker at the front micro — Tara, you can't go back and forth.
It's a progressive staff. You let people go who don't talk that often?
Tara, you can't go back and forth because there are other people who have been standing in line longer.
Okay, I'll go.
So if you want to speak, then you can speak.
Okay.
But otherwise, I would be going back to the other people, so.
Maybe the diversity officer will be more inclusive, but all right. Thank you. So first of all, I'm very — Tara, from West Acton, and I'm very concerned about costs. So the first thing I did was look up the return on investment of a diversity officer, and I found out that when an organization hires a diversity officer, that people stay longer, that the cost of replacing people, which is often 50% or even 100% or more of the salary of the person. So please consider that when you consider about this cost, because I don't like to have costs, but occasionally it's really important. And Acton's a sundown town. I don't know if you guys know what that means, but there were these unwritten laws and sometimes written laws that black people could not be in a town after dark, and Acton is one of those towns. I have friends who won't drive in Acton without a white person in the car. Today, I have witnessed, in Town Hall, I stood at a counter while a black woman — I walked up to the counter and a black woman was standing there, waiting, and then they called on me. And I was like, well, what about her? And the person said, oh, I didn't see her. Well, there's a white wall, and she's black. I don't know how you couldn't have seen her, but there was no place for me to report that. I started talking to people, and they were just like, oh, it was just a mistake, and you know, there are issues to take care of, like we have a social worker, you know, we have police. It's like, well, are the police supposed to be armed and going into all these buildings armed all the time when 90% or something like that are social worker calls? So these are types of issues that I think that we should consider when we talk about diversity officer, about keeping people happy and keeping people safe. And there's a reason why 2% of Acton residents are black and the state average is 7%. I care about very affordable housing, and I started talking about housing with the black community, and they were saying, like, we don't want to have more people come here when they don't even feel safe with people who live here. So I love this idea, and I hope you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no speakers inside. We'll take another speaker outside.
The speaker at the back microphone.
Thank you. I'm Jim Carey, 11 Gusswood Road. Unlike a lot of people who have spoken, I'm all for this proposal. We started this a year ago, and so far, we're still in committee. It's time to get moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker outside?
The speaker at the front microphone.
Miriam Lezak, High Street. Pretty much what Jim said, most of this, much of this money, much of these funds are to continue and to finish the study with the assumption that, yes, we need a DEIC officer to help guide Acton to be a better town, to be a more inclusive town, to be more open. Please vote yes, and you know, I think you'll notice that many of the people who have been up speaking against, diversity isn't really an issue for them. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a speaker inside. I recognize the speaker at the front mic.
I'm Mary Donald. I would please move the question.
There is a motion on the floor to cut off debate. All who are in favor, please say aye. Do you have a look out there, Bill? This requires two-thirds.
I don't hear the no's.
Well, I haven't gotten there yet. I just want to make sure you're good.
Can we do it again?
Yes. All who are in favor, please say aye. All who are opposed, please say nay. We only have a few inside. It looks like only a few outside. I would say debate is cut off. We will vote on this item. This is diversity officer study and implementation. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. The proponent has time to rebut. Go ahead, sir.
Can I have my slides for item 3A, please? Thank you. So the — I can clear up a number of things for people here. The DEIC was established by the select board late last summer. It's been gathering information from groups and individuals and is charged with producing a report for the select board. That report is due to the select board by the end of this summer, where after that, the select board will determine the policy direction based on those recommendations. This money then funds, in probably the fourth quarter, a consultant to analyze how to incorporate the diversity officer to achieve the policy directive. And the consultant supports the recruitment and screening to hire a diversity officer. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the diversity officer, and as a number of people have mentioned, the DEIC has not completed its work, but this funding is for when the DEIC completes its work. First of all, the diversity officer would have to be a subject matter expert for this role, similar to our sustainability director, who's a subject matter expert for sustainability. A diversity officer requires specific training. This is not just somebody off the street. Possible responsibilities here that I'm listing, again, we're waiting for the DEIC report, but I'm on the DEIC, and so I know the extent to which things are discussed. The first and foremost is an incident reporting system and responding to the reported incidents. Also, the diversity officer should be able to conduct and review training materials, conduct training and review training materials, review contract requirements, do recruiting for HR, and do other outreach. Really, some of the people here have been talking about the HR aspects of this position, and that's true, but that's a minority of this work. This work, again, is similar to the sustainability director, provides expertise across town government in this area. About $35,000 of the funding here is to study the position, how to integrate it into the town organization and recruit and screen candidates. I want to emphasize the how to integrate it into the town structure, because if it were purely an HR function, that's pretty simple. That person would go into HR. But this is not a purely HR function. The other monies are $50,000 to provide a partial salary for the first year. In future years, the diversity officer would be a normal paid position in the operating budget. Thank you. Please support these monies to address the recommendations from the DEIC.
Thank you. Now we will vote. Is my mic on? There we go. This requires a majority to pass. This is only item A, diversity officer study and implementation. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I believe there is a majority inside.
I believe there's a majority outside.
The motion does carry. That brings us to item C, Dog Park Grant Match, $21,000. Are there town meeting members wishing to speak to this item? Speaker at the front, go ahead.
I think there should not be a dog park in Acton. I think Acton should have dog leash laws like they used to. The land can be used for something else, planting flowers.
Thank you. Is there a speaker outside?
Yes, I recognize the speaker at the front microphone.
Hi, Karen Martin, 21 Main Street. As a taxpayer in Acton, I've always been excited to see that Acton pursues grants and is very active in doing that to offset our taxpayer dollars. I applaud the Acton Dog Park Committee for the work that they've done pursuing the Stanton Grant. We're basically looking at $21,000 translating to a quarter million dollars in funding for construction and design of a dog park. The Acton community would be fiscally smart to approve the Dog Park Match. Thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker outside?
Do you have slides?
I do not.
Okay. I recognize the speaker at the front microphone.
Hello. Matthew Post, 6 Isaac Davis Way. This article is clearly a political move by the town manager and select board to assert the recommendations of Acton Housing Authority, the Community Preservation Committee, and residents of Acton. The spending is reckless and premature if they continue to try and push it through. The Isaac Davis Way residents have asked, were asked by the select board and town manager to let them know what would make us amenable to the Dog Park. We asked them to bring three sites to the town meeting so that residents could choose and to fully commit to completing the walking park between the Dog Park and Acton Housing Authority. They flat out said no to both. They did not want the Acton town residents involved or their approval. The Acton Housing Authority letter to the board selectmen on October 19th states, "We, the Acton Housing Authority, recommend that the selectmen do not use that parcel on Main Street as a dog park." On May 11th, the Finance Committee heard a presentation from the Dog Park Committee. On May 25th, they heard from the Isaac Davis Way residents, and at that same meeting on the 25th, voted yes in favor of Article 17. Then, on June 1st, they held a special session, which we were not notified of, where the town attorney gave her opinion regarding Isaac Davis Way. When we asked if we could comment, we were told no. The attorney answered questions, but not all, and the CP and the Dog Park Committee Chair was asked to fill in the blanks and had trouble as well. We raised our hands to complete the questions, to complete the answers, and were ignored. And with that weak attempt to clear answers, they took an unprecedented revote, ending in a no on Article 17. The Community Preservation Committee voted not to fund the Dog Park this year because of location and legal issues. All of the neighbors have opposed the Dog Park because of safety, liability, and legal issues. The Stanton Grant is limited in scope, and the $250,000 is an up-to number and not a guarantee. The town has.
Your time has expired.
Please vote no on three.
I'll recognize the speaker at the front microphone inside.
Leo Faschman, Ray Terrace.
Excuse me, hold on a moment. Is there a point of order?
Point of order?
Go ahead.
Madam Moderator, I would like to encourage the speakers to speak to this particular item, this particular motion, this article. We do have something coming up in 17, and in the interest of time, I'm hoping that we can limit the discussions to this specific Mr. Martin's article.
Thank you. Recognize the speaker at the front microphone.
All right, that makes it a little bit more difficult because I got my speech. I'll use it on 17. The bottom line is, on an early meeting with the Dog Park Committee, when they tried to talk to neighbors to find out their concerns, the prior speaker had commented that nothing they can do can change his mind. Also said he was talking to the town manager about a problem with Isaac Davis Way, people being able to cross it. It's very interesting when he talks about the housing authority going against or not supporting the Dog Park. The interesting part is that the — they did not, they were not unanimous until they found out there might be a problem getting their pipes across Davis Way to get to the Dog Park. Once they said yes, you know, we will not support the Dog Park for some reason, I guess it's a big coincidence, next thing you know, they now have access to cross over Isaac Davis Way for their septic system. So please vote yes on this article. Thank you.
I'll remind the voters, this is about a Dog Park Grant Match. It is not specified where the Dog Park should be. So if you could keep your remarks to that. We'll recognize the speaker from outside. Mr. Mullin? Do we have a speaker outside?
So we have a speaker at the front microphone.
Hi, Dipen Joshi, 14 Isaac Davis. I'll continue with the thought process, mania by mad hat, in the context of Standard Foundation Grant. The Standard Foundation Grant only covers the grant within the Dog Park Fence and Activities. It does not cover anything which is the outside infrastructure outside of the Dog Park. The Pentagon Lot — The Pentagon Lot, which is proposed as a part of the dog park design, which includes access to the parking lot that is going to be constructed with 10 parking spaces, entry into the parking lot, a walkway from the parking lot up to the fence, gazebos, chairs, aesthetics that the Dog Park Committee has planned.
I'll remind the speaker, this is about...
They are not going to be considered as a part of the ground foundation. That amount, if you put a number to it, it is going to balloon to anywhere between $300,000 and $500,000. And that has not been discussed or talked about. So I would like to say no to this proposal. Another thing to add to it is it is sitting on Isaac Davis driveway, which is our driveway. We have been paying for the maintenance and cost of it, and if you are supporting these funds, you're taking our driveway away from us. So please don't do that. Thank you.
This article is about a grant match, not attached to a particular site. Please, let's keep our comments to that. I'll recognize the speaker at the front.
Thank you. I want to clarify, I want to take exception to a prior speaker who invoked the Community Preservation Committee inappropriately. The Community Preservation did not vote to recommend or deny. We had an intense, very good debate. It was four to four, and I take exception to a citizen to mischaracterize our vote. That's misleading to the other voters. I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you. We'll recognize the speaker outside.
Speaker at the back microphone.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just wanted to make sure to clarify a point. The meeting of the Finance Committee on June 1st was a regularly scheduled, regularly posted, and completely normal meeting. Furthermore, it is not unprecedented for the Finance Committee to change opinion when new information comes to light. In fact, it happens pretty much every year. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll recognize the speaker at the front microphone inside.
Claire Siska, Stowe Street. Really quickly, just on the finances, this is a, compared to our, I don't know how many millions of dollars is in our budget, this is $21,000. It's a one-time expenditure. It is less than a dollar per resident in town, or if you're counting households, it's about $2.80. And what's the worst that can happen? As you can see, we're going to have a healthy debate about Article 17. So if this passes and Article 17 also passes, then the Board of Selectmen has to reconsider it, and the money might not get spent. If Article 17 fails and we do not get the Stanton Grant, which is highly unlikely, the money also would not be spent. So if Article 17 fails and we do get the Stanton Grant, which we expect to, you're going to get $250,000, and people later will correct the record about what the Stanton Grant covers. So I ask you to vote yes. It is a no-risk situation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll recognize the speaker outside.
The gentleman at the front microphone.
Sure. So I'm Ronald Albuquerque, 24-year resident of Acton, 24-year resident of Isaac Davis Way, and a longtime dog owner. Just want to make a couple of points. The first one, to comment on the gentleman from the Finance Committee. I understand that revotes do happen. What was kind of interesting was the town council got to speak, but the Isaac Davis Way residents did not get a chance to actually present their case before a revote occurred. So I guess my question to everyone, regardless of your feeling on the dog park or funding, is that fair and balanced? Is that how it should be? And can we just actually request a revote every single time we don't agree with something? And the second point I want to make, again, is the Dog Park Committee have talked about $21,000 is going to give you $250,000. It's up to $250,000. You may get $25,000. You may not get the full $250,000. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll recognize the speaker inside.
Hi, Franny Osman, 16 Half Moon Hill. This reminds me of around 2008 or 2009, when the Transportation Advisory Committee needed about $20,000 as a match. It's very hard when you're working on a certain project to get that match. There's always this timing issue. I've seen a lot of hard work and a very cohesive communicative process going on from the Dog Committee, the Dog Park Committee, and so I support this article.
Thank you. We'll recognize the speaker outside.
The speaker at the back microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Alyssa Nickel from School Street in South Acton. I'm not a dog owner, but I support this... Sorry, I'm hearing a little bit of a delay. I support this article, this $21,000 grant match for the Stanton Foundation Grant for the construction of a dog park. I want to address the difficulty that was faced by the volunteer boards and committees in town when faced with a lot of disinformation. There wasn't any committee that voted against a dog park, and I just want to make that clear and urge you to vote for this $21,000 grant match. Thank you.
I'll recognize the speaker at the back microphone inside.
At Astrotroostor, 15 Mohegan Road. I'd like to move the question.
There is a motion to cut off debate. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, requires a two-thirds vote to pass. All who are in favor of cutting off debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The motion does carry. We will now vote on the Dog Park Grant Match for $21,000. Requires a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye. All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion does carry. We'll now move to the second part of this article, funded from stabilization fund, requiring a two-thirds vote. We'll follow this in the same manner. Mr. Martin moves that the town transfer from the stabilization fund and appropriate the following amounts for the purposes set forth in Items E through M of the article, including costs incidental and related thereto, and that the town authorize the town manager to lease on such terms and conditions as he may determine vehicles and equipment for a period not to exceed five years, and to sell, trade, or otherwise dispose of vehicles and equipment being replaced and to expend any proceeds so received. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. I will read down the list of items and the amounts. If anyone wishes to hold them out, please call out. E, sidewalks, $90,000. Did I hear a second hold? I think I only heard one. Two? Okay, very well. F, brush chipper. G, net zero vehicle replacement program for $50,000. I'll repeat, the brush chipper is for $70,000. H, complete streets program, $50,000. I, fire alarm systems for existing fire stations for $50,000. J, sustainability program, $50,000. K, fire tools, $30,000. L, forklift, $30,000. M, police technology, $25,000.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Do we have one hold here?
On police technology?
That was police technology, yes.
Is there a second hold? Seeing none?
Hold on. It's a second. Yes, there are two holds out there.
Okay, we will hold out E, sidewalks, and M, police technology. We'll now take a vote on the Items F through L, requires a two-thirds vote. All who are in favor, please say aye. All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion does carry by the required two-thirds. Is there a town meeting member wishing to speak to E sidewalks? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Ripley Martin. I live at 15 Barker Road. My first question is through the moderator to the appropriate Select Board member to understand which sidewalks are being paved with the $90,000, with a clarification point that in several prior town meetings, the town has approved acquisition of land on the top three or four sidewalks that have yet to actually be constructed. So further in this schedule in the warrant, there is yet another land acquisition, which appears to be a town to regional school district land transfer, and this $90,000 does not clarify which sidewalks will be built, and notably the Taylor Road sidewalk that is addressed later in the warrant.
Mr. Martin, do you have an answer?
Yes, so there is a sidewalk priority list, and I don't have it off the top of my head, but I believe at the top of the list is a portion of Great Road. Second on the list is a portion of High Street, I think, and I'm forgetting the other ones. I think Taylor Road is fourth or fifth. And we construct the first sidewalk where all the easements are in place and any encumbrances are removed. So if the third sidewalk on the list has no encumbrances and the first two are still waiting for things, we'll take the third one and begin construction on it. I don't know if I answered your question.
I think that the town deserves to understand which sidewalks are being approved in which order, which has, the visibility has fallen away since the sidewalk committee has been disbanded and folded into the Transportation Committee. And in prior town meetings, notably the 2018 town meeting, when the citizens of town meeting approved expenditures, it was unclear which other dependent land acquisitions were required to allow for those criteria to be met that you indicated. So therefore, a comment to make it much clearer what the criteria are prior to approving these budgets. Otherwise, I'm completely in favor of doing this. It just seems like it's taking too long, quite honestly.
Thank you. Is there a speaker outside?
Yes, Madam Moderator, the speaker at the front microphone.
It's Tara from West Acton, but I'm speaking about police technology.
Okay, we'll hold that for a moment then. Any other speaker outside on E?
Yes, Madam Moderator, the speaker at the front microphone.
Call previous question.
There is a motion to cut off debate. All who are in favor, please say... Oh, is there a second?
Second.
All who are in favor of cutting off debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion does carry. We will now vote on sidewalks for $90,000. Requires a two-thirds vote to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye. All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion does carry by the two-thirds. We'll now take any comments or questions on M, police technology. I believe there's a speaker outside.
I recognize the speaker at the front microphone.
Thank you. It's Tara from West Acton, and I have a concern about the gathering of information about people without their permission, in particular vulnerable communities, people from vulnerable communities, populations, in particular undocumented immigrants. And it was my understanding that the police had either gotten through a federal gift or something, a police license plate scanner, and that the police were driving around scanning license plates and feeding that information up into federal databases to help them hunt people down. I don't think anybody is illegal, and I don't think we should be participating in that. So I would like very much a confirmation what this police technology is for, whether it's for coordination with federal databases, or I'd like to understand that because I think it's a bad idea, including sending information to the state databases, which then coordinate with the federal databases. So I would like to know what this technology is for and whether it enables any of that coordination.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. Do you have a response?
Yes, this item is for the physical computers in the cruisers. It's not for any connection to a database or anything. It's just to replace 10-year-old computers with new computers.
Thank you. I'll recognize the speaker at the front microphone.
I think the police department has too big of a budget. They have too many police in Acton, and they carry guns, and it's not a good thing.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers, we will vote. This is on M, police technology, for $25,000. Requires a two-thirds vote. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion does carry by the two-thirds requirement. We'll now move to Article 4. There are four items, and each has its own motion, so we'll take them one at a time. I will just read the first motions, and then Mr. Charter will give his presentation. Mr. Charter moves that the town dismiss Item A of Article 4, Public Works Facility and Transfer Station Design. Do I hear a second? Mr. Charter, to your motion, to all of Article 4.
Thank you. So there, as the moderator noted, there are four items in Article 4. The first one, which we're going to pass over, was regarding the public works building. The studies that have been produced did not come in in time. That entire project needs some more work before we come forward. We'll probably bring that back in next year. So, to the other articles. Let's see, I'll go to my presentation. Item B, Kelly's Corner Pedestrian Lights, requests the reallocation of $473,700 from previously approved articles and $505,770 of new borrowing to pay for 92 pedestrian streetlights in the Kelly's Corner project. This proposal has been recommended by the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee. The state has pledged approximately $18 million to completely rebuild the area, running along Massachusetts Avenue from Charter Road to Yankee Village condominiums, along Main Street from south of Beverly Road to the Hosmer House, and along the length of the private roadway soon to become a town road that runs from Main Street to Massachusetts Avenue near Roach Brothers. The state has paid for most of the right-of-way acquisition and will pay for almost all of the construction cost. The one item that the state will not pay for is the pedestrian scale streetlights along the sidewalks. The plan shows 92 streetlights, each 15 and 1/2 feet high, illuminate the entire length of the project, providing excellent lighting for the sidewalks and roadways to encourage walking and hopefully mitigating speeding cars. The state will pay for the underground conduits and wiring, but the cost of the light poles and fixtures is a local obligation. It would not be financially feasible to go back at a later time to install the conduit and wiring at our own cost, which is estimated at over $591,000. So this is a one-time opportunity. The reallocation of funds from previous articles is possible due to the generosity of the state in absorbing some design costs and right-of-way costs that were local obligations, hence the leftover money. This is truly a one-time chance to put the finishing touches on the project set to go out to bid in December of this year. There will not be an opportunity to bring this to town meeting at a later time. And those are the proposed poles, which the design was developed as a result of some citizen feedback, and those are the specifications. Thank you. I'll move on to Article C. Thank you. I'll move on to Article C. Article 4C, the presentation, please. Article 4C requests a sum of $886,000 for the construction of intersection improvements at Main Street and Newtown Road, Main Street and Conquered Road, and Main Street and Woodbury Lane, including the Davis Monument Triangle, and moving the horse trough. The article has been recommended by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. This area is notorious for traffic jams and a high accident rate. For a number of years, I occupied an office in a small red bungalow at 468 Main Street, and I personally observed almost daily near misses at these intersections. In fact, police department records show that between 2009 and 2014, there were 33 vehicle crashes just at the intersection of Conquered Road and Main Street, due to the poor alignment of the roadway intersections and sightline obstacles such as the horse trough. There are frequently long lines of traffic stacked up and many frustrated drivers. Persons who are familiar with the area develop circuitous routes through neighborhood streets to avoid the intersections. The work proposed will adjust the geometry of the intersections to allow easier turning movements, and will create one-way traffic flow around the Davis Monument Triangle, and will prohibit left turns pulling onto Main Street from Woodbury Lane. This is a complete streets plan, providing safer passage for vehicles, pedestrians, fire trucks, and bicycles. Plan has been reviewed by the Historic District Commission and will not introduce traffic lights onto the historic common. If this article is approved, 75% design plan should be completed late this summer, and between now and then, there will be some concept plans developed and a public outreach program to envision how the work on Main Street will interact with a possible redesign of Woodbury Lane and the Town Hall complex. Nothing in this proposal will prohibit installing a traffic signal at a later time, if it is warranted and if that idea is publicly accepted. The last time there was significant work on the common was in the late 1960s, and considering the increase in traffic, what is proposed here is overdue. It represents a reasonable compromise to improve traffic flow and safety while still preserving the common. Cost of installing a traffic signal at a later date, which we're not proposing at this point, is estimated at around $300,000. Much of the work that's proposed today would have to be done if we were to signalize the intersection at a later time. Item D. 53 River Street Dam Removal Grant Match, who costs $250,000 for matching funds towards a request for funding from the Massachusetts Dam and Seawall Repair or Removal Program. This proposal has been recommended by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. 53 River Street is a parcel of land in South Acton which has been in industrial use since the 1830s, originally as a woolen mill and more recently as a construction yard for paving contractor. Included on this site is a dam that held back the waters of Fort Pond Brook, which were used to power the mill. This parcel was purchased by the town in October of 2016. That was Article Six for $908,000. Subsequent to the purchase, the State Office of Dam Safety declared the existing dam to be a safety hazard and required that it be repaired and maintained or removed. A special committee was formed to evaluate the site and make recommendations. The result of the outreach and study was that the dam be removed, that historic artifacts be preserved, and that eventually a riverside park be developed on the site. To advance this work in 2019, CPC and Town Meeting approved $75,000 for study and permitting. And in 2020, the Community Preservation Committee and Town Meeting approved an additional $120,000 towards the effort. In February 2020, the state awarded $112,000 in a municipal vulnerability grant to assist to the project, and later in this town meeting, you'll be asked to approve an additional $100,000 in community preservation funds to continue the project. Early this month, the state awarded the state awarded the town $75,000 towards continuing the design and permitting of the project, and encouraged Acton to apply for a grant for the actual construction and demolition in the fall of 2021. If approved, the amount of the grant requested from the state would be $1 million. An archaeological study of the site was recently completed, and that study will be included in the packet of materials to be submitted as part of the Section 106 review of the proposed demolition. An engineering plan has reached the 60% design stage dealing with the proposed demolition, historic preservation, stabilization, and ecological restoration of the brook. Eventually, after all mitigation work is completed, the area will be turned into a water historical park. Thank you.
Thank you. So the first thing we will do is vote on Item A. Mr. Charter moves that the town dismiss Item A of Article Four. Requires a majority to pass, to not do anything. So all who are in favor, please say aye. All who are opposed, please say nay. That motion does carry. Now we'll move to Article B, or Part B. I do need to read the motion. It's a little bit lengthy, and then we'll discuss. Mr. Charter moves that the town, one, appropriate $979,470 to be expended by the town manager for the purposes set forth in Item B of Article Four, including all costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, A, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow $505,770 pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. B, the unexpended portion of the appropriation for Kelly's Corner planning costs approved by a vote of the town under Item A of Article 17 at the 2013 annual town meeting in the amount of $19,860 is hereby transferred to meet the appropriation approved by this vote. And C, the unexpended portion of the appropriation for Kelly's Corner planning costs approved by a vote of the town under Article Five at the 2019 annual town meeting in the amount of $453,840 is hereby transferred to meet the appropriation approved by this vote. And D, provided further that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, and, two, appropriate and transfer from the stabilization fund $40,970 for the payment of the first year of debt service and underwriting costs on such borrowing. Do I hear a second? It has been moved and seconded. The Finance Committee, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As is reflected in the printed warrant, we did not recommend the DPW appropriation, and we applaud the Select Board for passing over this tonight and coming back with a different approach. Regarding the pedestrian lighting, it was a 5-3 vote to recommend, which is only interesting in this case since it is not actually two-thirds support as required for the article to be re-approved, but is enough to show that the Finance Committee recommends the pedestrian lighting for Kelly's Corner. The Acton Center redesign was unanimously supported. The dam removal money was also unanimously supported, though at least one member reminded the committee that this ongoing expense is a cautionary tale on land acquisitions. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. I will now recognize the speaker at the front microphone inside.
I think Acton is spending their money wrong. Acton should remain as Kelly's Corner without lights. I think the town halls should be the town hall, and the monument should be the monument, and the town green should be the town green, and that should be kept like it is. I think this corporation is getting money for building dams and taking them down, and it's not fair.
Thank you. If the future comments could be held to Item B for the moment, I see there's a speaker outside.
I heartily support the Kelly Corner's project. However, the vision of it being this wonderful, walkable, new West Acton is delusional, is the best I can think of. There is nowhere for people to park. It is not somewhere that I could go have dinner at Not Your Average Joe's and walk over to Starbucks for an after-dinner coffee, because I'd have to get in my car from the private Not Your Average Joe's parking lot and drive over to the private Starbucks parking lot. There is no on-street parking like there is in West Acton. We're talking about spending a million dollars. That is the whole thing. That is what we would borrow, plus what we would, are just re-appropriating in order to have lights. And honestly, they're not that attractive. Everything else in there will improve our traffic flow, will make a beautiful area for people to drive through. But we're putting up pedestrian lights so that the people, luckily enough, to live in that area, will have a nice place to walk. But this is a lot of money to spend for that small population.
Thank you. I'll recognize the speaker at the back microphone.
I wanted to
Please tell us who you are first.
Oh, sorry. Michael Biolas, AD Willow Street. I'd like confirmation that the study of the lights, or the design of the lights minimizes light pollution, especially the upward projecting light pollution. Has it the most recent technology in that regard?
Mr. Charter.
Yes, these fully comply with the town lighting bylaw, and they will produce the dark sky effect, which we're all looking for.
Thank you. We'll recognize the speaker outside.
The speaker at the front microphone.
I move the previous question.
There's a motion to cut off debate. Is there a second? There is a second. All, this requires a two-thirds vote. All who are in favor of cutting off debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion does carry by two-thirds. This is just on Item B, Kelly's Corner Pedestrian Lights, for $979,470. Does require a two-thirds vote to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye. All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion, yes, go ahead, Bill.
Do you mind if I make a quick count?
Please do. And if we're going to count outside, we will count inside.
Please hold up your
So just hold up, just hold up, and I'll do it, and the tellers can help me. But if you're in favor, please hold up.
I have an estimate of the ayes.
Go ahead.
Do you want to call the nays, then I'll tell you whether
Yep. All who are opposed, please hold your cards up.
My estimate out here is 200 in favor and 85 opposed.
The motion does carry by 293 to 108. Clearly a two-thirds majority. Before we move to Item C, I just want to remind folks inside that there is a water bubbler over by the back door, just in case you run out or you need a little refreshment over there. Item C, Acton Center redesign construction. Mr. Charter moves that the town, one, appropriate $886,000 to be expended by the town manager for the purposes set forth in Item C of Article Four, including all costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow $886,000 pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and provided further that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, and, two, appropriate and transfer from the stabilization fund $71,771 for the payment of the first year of debt service and underwriting costs on such borrowing. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. We've had the presentation on this article, and the Finance Committee has made their recommendation. Are there any town meeting members wishing to discuss?
There are none out here.
There are none in here. We will vote. This is Item C. Requires two-thirds vote to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. Bill?
Clearly two-thirds here.
Clearly two-thirds here. I declare the vote carries by the two-thirds majority. That brings us to Item D, River Street Dam Removal Grant Match. Mr. Charter moves that the town, one, appropriate $250,000 to be expended by the town manager for the purposes set forth in Item D of Article Four, including all costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow $250,000 pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 8, 24, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and provided further that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, and, two, appropriate and transfer from the stabilization fund $20,251 for the payment of the first year of debt service and underwriting costs on such borrowing. Do I hear a second? It has been moved and seconded. We've had the presentation. We've heard the Finance Committee recommendation. Are there any people wishing to speak?
There are none out here.
There are none in here. We will vote. This requires a two-thirds vote as well. All who are in favor of Item D, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who are opposed, please say nay.
It's clearly two-thirds.
The motion clearly carries by the two-thirds majority. Thank you. That brings That brings us to Article Five, Waste Water Treatment System Rehabilitation. This is also a fairly lengthy article and then we'll have the presentation, I mean, lengthy motion. Mr. Martin moves that the town appropriate $4,800,000 for the purpose of rehabilitating, improving, and/or making extraordinary repairs to the wastewater treatment facility, including engineering, design, permitting, and planning costs, all other costs incidental and related thereto, and any related costs or expenses thereof as defined in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 29(c), Section 1. That to meet this appropriation, A, $300,000 shall be transferred from the sewer reserves fund, and B, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow $4,500,000 under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, and/or Chapter 29(c), or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. That the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, established under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 29(c), and in connection therewith to enter into a financing agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid that may be available for the project or the financing thereof. That the town manager is authorized to enter into any agreements with the DEP to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other actions necessary to carry out the project. And that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Mr. Martin, to your motion.
Hello again. So this map shows in dark gray our existing sewer district. And in the colored areas, areas of other need areas in town, today we're just talking about the dark gray area. So it's rehabilitation of the wastewater treatment plant that serves that district and the little purple area down the bottom, which I'll talk about. So our wastewater treatment plant is 20 years old. It needs work. It needs rehabilitation. There are a number of aging components, and I'll talk about those a little bit in a second. The control systems are out of date and not maintainable. There's like 20-year-old computers. Some of the pump stations are not operating at their full efficiency anymore and they need upgrading. This project does not include any increase in discharge capacity. It's really just meant to serve the existing sewer district. And in addition, there are some energy efficiency measures that are part of this rehabilitation and the potential for adding some solar, but that's a little bit of an independent study. So why do we need the rehabilitation now? There are a lot of parts of this plant that are hanging on just because of the clever usage by the operators of the plant. There are pipes that no longer maintain a vacuum because they have leaks in them. There are pumps that operate no longer at full capacity. There are valves that don't work right, gates that don't close, things like that. And I mentioned earlier that the control system is out of date and needs to be replaced. One of the other things that's important here for doing this now is a number of funding sources have come together in addition to the monies in this article. There is a MassWorks grant that we got for... MassWorks grants reward a public-private benefit. And in this case, we got this grant from the state because of Powder Mill Place and its connection to the sewer system. And the developer of Powder Mill Place is also providing a half million dollars for us to use as we wish for the sewer system. The little purple area that I showed you on the map earlier, that's in an area independent of this project. The developer is also paying for the piping to go from the apartments at Powder Mill to the existing sewer district. And even though the developer is paying for those, they'll be sized so they could be used by customers along the way. And if someone wishes to hook up, the town will receive the privileged fees when they hook up. There's no better mints involved here because there's no bonds to pay off from that work. The DEP is requiring this work. We have to maintain a well-operating plant to continue to get discharge approval from the Department of Environmental Protection. This is just a list of things that are being rehabilitated or upgraded as part of this project. I'm not going to read them. You can read them. There's quite a variety of things, including the HVA system and the plant itself, which is on its last legs. So the total cost of this project is 6.2 million. And four and a half million of that would be borrowed from the state revolving fund at about 1.5%. And while the project is under construction, there is essentially no-interest loan available from the Clean Water Trust. The other funding in addition to the loan itself, the $300,000 at the bottom from the sewer stabilization fund is part of this article. And as I mentioned earlier, it comes at the same time as the MassWorks grant and the developer mitigation funding. The debt service is paid for out of sewer usage fees. There is no general tax revenue involved in this article, so it's all paid for out of the sewer funds. The sewer commissioners, which is the board of, the select board, have recently voted to increase the sewer rates by 2.5% for each of the next three years. The new customers from Powder Mill Place will help offset a number of the costs here as well. The construction schedule is pretty simple. The rest of this year, the design will finish. It'll be constructed next year to be finished up in early 2023. Thank you for supporting this rehabilitation of the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. Could we hear the finance committee recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Finance committee recommends this article. We like that it is leveraged with other people's money for change and that it is being financed at a very low rate. It is important to note that even though the sewer users will be paying the debt service, the reason this is coming before town meeting is that the sewer is an enterprise fund and it does not have the ability to issue its own debt. It's not like the school district or the water district. So an enterprise fund cannot issue its own debt. So the debt that will be issued in this case is general obligations of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. I see a speaker at the front microphone inside.
I think that Acton has clean water and doesn't need to spend millions of dollars on any kind of sewage treatment plan. It's a waste of money and it's a way to get money from the government and the state.
Thank you. I see we have a speaker outside.
Tara Fredericks from West Acton. And I have prepared an amendment and I would like to move that amendment unless I can be convinced that the claim that this does not include expansion can be convincing because in the DEP letter that's referenced in the motion, the article, it says replace and rehab mixers, decanters, et cetera, et cetera, to accommodate expected increase in flow and demand, construct new ribs with the capacity of, et cetera, to accommodate the maximum needs, planning area. And then in the MassWorks grant application in particular, it says upgrade the downstream system, including a bunch of stuff to accommodate additional flow in the West Acton sewer expansion. So I hear David and I would like very much to take him at his word, but it's my understanding that only the motion matters. And so I would like to hear from town council if David's claim that this will not include expansion is binding.
You are correct that the motion is what is acted on by town meeting. I'm not sure I understand your question.
May I ask you...
Yes, you may rephrase your question.
So if David, who's making the motion, claims that it does not include expansion, can I be assured that the project will not include expansion?
That his presentation is not part of the motion. Perhaps you need clarification to make sure you are both on the same page with respect to the term expansion.
I'd like to know what my vote means. So if I'm voting for an expansion, I'd like to know whether that's included. If he's saying it's not included, then I'd like to amend, I move to amend, that the following words be added to the motion. C, subject to the express condition that this does not authorize the town to undertake any work to expand the sewer system. And I handed this in earlier for your review. So if you can assure me that I don't need this because expansion is not included, then I won't need to move to make sure that expansion is not included be included in the motion.
That is not a question for council's answer. Perhaps Mr. Martin can answer that.
Mr. Martin.
So I guess expansion could be two different things. The main thing for expansion is that the plant is licensed to discharge 299,000 gallons per day. That amount will not be increased by this project. And in fact, we don't hit that today at our peak day ever. We've only hit about 75% of that level. So there's, and so there's no increase of discharge there. And in terms of increasing, for example, the part of the document that the speaker read referred to West Acton, that was a vote two years ago by town meeting. And so that's not involved in here. There's no additional piping in West Acton. As I mentioned during my presentation, there is additional piping from the apartments at Powder Mill to the sewer system, but that is also not part of this article that's being paid for by the developer and will not increase, that also will not increase the discharge capacity.
So I respectfully ask you to include in your motion that this does not include any other expansion besides Powder Mill.
So are you making an amendment to the motion?
Yes. I move to add the following words to the motion. Subject to the express condition that this does not authorize the town to undertake any work to expand the sewer system, comma, except for what is needed by Powder Mill Place.
Is there a... Wait, just a minute, just a minute. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
There is a second. Either is there further discussion only to the amendment regarding expansion as was I'll recognize the speaker inside.
Me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Ron Beck, 80, Estherbrook Road, Acton. I would like to strongly support this clarification amendment. I reviewed the presentation that was made to the board of, the select board, I guess about a month ago when they were finalizing the warrant articles. And in the presentation PowerPoint and supporting documentation, it talks about expansion. And they seem, those bullet points seem to have been removed before it was presented to the town meeting. And moreover, in those supporting documentation, the consultant, you know, in calculating the idea of expansion specifically brought up again, enumerated in their list, Spencer Tuttle Flint area and the West Acton area, and both were resoundingly defeated in previous town meetings. So it seems there's at most confusion and maybe lack of transparency as to what this money is for. So I want it to be explicit. I do believe the amendment is very important because if there is to be any work done, any consulting work, any design work about expansion, this needs public discussion. It might be warranted, but alternatives also should be considered, engineering alternatives as well as the desires of the town should be publicly discussed. So I just want that clarification because it was present, that those words about expansion were present in the PowerPoint materials presented, the board of selectmen, I think it was somewhere around May 15th, and they disappeared from this PowerPoint, but it leaves some lack of clarification.
Thank you. I see there is a speaker outside.
So let's take the speaker at the back microphone first.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Alyssa Nickel from School Street. I am a sewer user. My home is connected to the sewer. I had prepared a statement in opposition to Article Five, so I want to wholeheartedly endorse this amendment and it would bring my approval of Article Five were this amendment to be made and passed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll recognize the speaker at the front inside.
I make a motion for this town meeting to end. It's getting late and there's a lot to discuss.
You, I just want to be clear, you asked for us to end the meeting?
Yes.
Well, we do have a lot to discuss and I think we should continue to do that. Anybody can leave if they choose to leave. But I think we need to keep pushing forward with the agenda. Thank you. I'll recognize a speaker outside.
Speaker at the front microphone.
George Morton, 26 Marshall Path. I move the question of the amendment.
It has been moved and seconded on the amendment to cut off debate. All who are in favor of cutting off debate on the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion does carry. So now we will vote only on the amendment. If I could have the text of that again. Point of order.
Madam Moderator, we have a point of order.
Yes.
Go ahead, Tara.
I handed in a written thing, but after hearing David's thing, I want to say, comma, except what's needed for Powder Mill Place. So it's the written thing plus the except for...
I'll repeat that. I'll repeat that now. The motion to cut off debate did carry by two-thirds and now I will reread the amendment, which is attached...
Matt, can I have...
Hey, go ahead.
Madam Moderator, Tara made a point of order. Did you hear that one?
Yes.
Oh, so the amendment is...
I'm going to read the amendment right now.
Okay, that's her point of order.
Yes. I move to add the following words to the motion. C, subject to the express condition that this does not authorize the town to undertake any work to expand the sewer system except as needed for Powder Mill Place. That is what we're voting on right now. This does require a majority to pass. All who are in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
It appears that the amendment, the motion was favorably voted out here.
Same in here. Same in here. The motion does carry with the amendment. So, now the entire article includes this amendment as we just voted on. So, now we are back to the main motion. Is there any further discussion on the main motion, wastewater treatment system?
There are none out here.
There are none in here. So, we will now vote on this as amended, does require a two-thirds vote to pass. All who are in favor of the article as amended, please say aye. All who are opposed, please say nay.
It's unanimous, or one vote.
The motion does carry by the two-thirds required. That brings us to Article 6. Dr. Peterson moves that the town raise and appropriate $67,543,928 to be expended by the superintendent of schools to fund the fiscal year 2022 assessment of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District. Do I hear a second? It has been moved and seconded. Dr. Peterson, to your motion.
I have the privilege of representing the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to request Acton's support for Article 6, the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District Assessment. The development of a budget is a collaborative process between the school committee, the superintendent, and the district administration. With the spring elections, our school committee will be reformed after town meeting through the addition of Andrew Schwartz and Ben Blumenthal. We thank Diane Baum and Angie So for their service. This presentation and budget are the result of work by this year's school committee. The year began and ended like no other. The schools adopted a hybrid model. Some students and families chose a hybrid learning mode, some days in school, some days learning remotely. Other families elected a fully remote mode. At the elementary level, an entirely new remote school with new teachers and administrators was created. School choice took on a whole new meaning. In the meantime, students at Gates and Douglas adjusted to life in the shadow of the construction of our new elementary school building. In light of the ongoing pandemic, town leaders elected to lay town meeting, providing additional time for the development of our FY22 budget and happily providing time for many of us to get vaccinated and unfortunately for the weather to get rather warmer. We want our students to learn to be resilient. The district continued to model this behavior in our response to the challenges of this unique school year. Our administrative team made timely strategic and operational decisions in spite of conflicting information about COVID and changing and belated state guidances. Our students gained the ability to learn remotely and sadly realized that snow days were another casualty of the pandemic. We continued to provide food support to our community and served over a quarter million meals. The district is blessed to enjoy the strong support of families for our school system. As I look at the student looking at a laptop, I realize we broke every reasonable limit families ever tried to set around screen time. When we converted parents into IT support and hands-on teachers, we relied on more family contributions than the district had ever needed. For some students, more independent learning, a short commute, and a new school uniform were welcome changes. For some of our older students, developing independent time management and learning skills was an appropriate progression to life after AB. For other students, particularly our younger students, the changes stunted their development. Everyone was compelled to manage significant emotional challenges. As a community, we survived the pandemic. While we are proud of all that we accomplished, we recognize that we are in a recovery phase as we look forward to the new school year. Hardship tests us. Our staff, teachers, nurses, custodians, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, and office personnel, all accepted new job responsibilities. No one ever had contact tracer in their job description. Our staff masked up and put their hearts and minds to the work at hand. On behalf of the school committee, I thank them for their extraordinary efforts. Thanks to the support of the Acton and Boxborough communities, our new school building project has begun. The building permit was issued in January, site work has progressed substantially, and the shape of the building is visible. In the fall of 2022, our students, families, and community will enjoy a wonderful new facility. Financially, the school building project is in a good position as our change orders related to various aspects of site work, unidentified subterranean objects, AKA ledge, were offset by favorable pricing in other areas. The guaranteed maximum price was a very favorable $89 million. The net effect is that our owner's contingency fund is a robust $4 million as we shift focus to new building construction. The new building represents our long-term commitment to our students. It also represents our long-term commitment to the environment with a triple net zero design. Energy and water use have been thoughtfully addressed. We are managing construction waste and will augment our operational waste programs on building occupancy. The Massachusetts School Building Authority has recognized our new building as the model for green school buildings in the Commonwealth. We are just a year away from converting the artist rendering of Slide H to the reality of a new building. The frame of the new building is a reality. The last beam was placed in May and we celebrated with a traditional talking-off ceremony. Another virtual activity was organized. The opening of the new building will be a joyous in-person celebration. When the school committee started working on town meeting presentation a few weeks ago, we crafted the statement, AB vaccination levels are very high and increasing. Our students have shown true leadership. At the high school, 80% of our students are vaccinated as are more than 55% of our junior high school students. Our sixth graders, the youngest group eligible for vaccination, have reached an astounding 65% vaccination level. We appreciate the effort of the community to minimize our health risk in the future. The delay in town meeting has allowed us to have greater certainty about both state and federal aid. While we still face some uncertainties, our budget is well positioned for the likely challenges of the new year. The budget process revolves around two big questions. What do our students need and what are the financial resources of our communities? Strategically, we are introducing the use of multi-tiered support, MTSS, which will strengthen our literacy and math programs. The district's thoughtful reserve level established during the early years of full regionalization allowed us to minimize financial disruptions to our services during the pandemic. We need to return our reserves to appropriate levels. Tactically, we recognize that there is still uncertainty about state funding for our district as well as rules governing the use of federal funds for the schools. As in the past year, we will aggressively pursue state and federal funds. Likewise, we will be carefully monitoring enrollment, particularly for kindergarten, which was disrupted by the pandemic. The ABRSD budget for FY22 is $99.7 million, an increase of 2.9% over FY21. The Acton assessment is $67.5 million, an increase of 3%. Financial restraint in the school and town budgets result in a tax rate below the proposition two and a half limit. The budget respects our core values of equity, wellness, and engagement. ABRSD fully regionalized K-12 in 2015. In FY22, the increase in the budget is returned to normal after last year's large increase associated with the debt payment for the new school building. The transition period associated with full regionalization ended last year. The current assessments reflect a purely enrollment-based formula. For FY22, Acton's assessment will increase 3% and Acton will pay 84% of the district assessment, while Boxborough's assessment will increase by 4.6% and Boxborough pays 16% of the district's assessment. A strong reserve enables strategic rather than tactical financial decision-making. Last year, town meeting approved a budget containing a pandemic contingency of $500,000. Fortunately, the district benefited from four federal programs, FEMA, ESER, CARES, and the COVID Relief Fund, which covered $3.4 million of expenses. As a result, the $500,000 contingency will be returned to E&amp;D at the end of the year along with a significant portion of the FY21 appropriation from E&amp;D. I ask you to support Article 6, the ABRSD assessment. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have, could we hear the Board of Select, or the Select Board's recommendation?
Despite the very difficult year, the AB school district has managed their budgets well. Our funding levels have been agreed to through the ALG process. The Select Board voted to recommend this article.
Thank you. The Finance Committee recommendation?
I want to take a moment to say how grateful I am to our Acton-Boxborough teachers and administrators who took an inconceivable situation and worked every day to give our AB students a routine, a meal, an education, and a community of support when everything else around them was uncertain. The Finance Committee voted to recommend this article.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the town meeting members?
There is nobody standing right here.
Nobody standing in here, so we will vote. This requires a majority vote to pass. All who are in favor of Article 6, Acton-Boxborough Regional School District Assessment, please say aye. All who are opposed, please say nay.
Overwhelmingly in favor.
It is unanimous in here. The motion clearly carries. Thank you. We'll now move to the Minuteman Regional School District Assessment. Ms. Norris moves that the town raise and appropriate $2,189,873 to fund the fiscal year 2022 assessment of the Minuteman Regional School District. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. We will hear from a non-Acton resident, Dr. Boquillan, to present this to us.
Thank you, madam, madam moderator. It's a pleasure to be here. My name's Ed Boquillan. I want to talk to you a little bit about our FY22 budget. Our operating capital, our operating budget for next year is up a modest 2.4%. Our operating capital and debt is up about $400,000. I'll explain that in a second. The largest component of our FY22 budget is the payment, the bond payments on the new Minuteman High School. We've been preparing all of our towns for this, so it shouldn't be a surprise, but now that it's here, it is a big number. Just wanted to point out that the interest from Acton students has been increasing over the last few years and continues to increase as we move and look into next fall. We're very proud of the performance of all of our students, particularly from Acton. We have also a student who just graduated from the Minuteman Technical Institute. Many folks don't know that we have an adult post-secondary program in the evening. And you can see Brian here is accepting his certificate of completion from the electrical program. We are expanding MTI programming next year as well. One of our great alumni from Acton, Sophia, who was in our engineering program and helped start a Girls in STEM program, is now on our program advisory committee for engineering, logistics engineering, and robotics and automation, and she's continuing her education at Carnegie Mellon. Our priorities for the next coming year, obviously, to keep staff and students safe, to deliver high-quality career and vocational technical education. We are starting our animal science program this year. I don't know if we'll have a dog park or not, but logistics engineering will be expanding as well. We're closing out the MSBA project. Our athletic fields construction is ongoing right now and will be completed in September of this year. That will help us ramp up our facilities and rental revenues. In increasing enrollment, we have great concerns about capacity in the coming year. You can see Acton's historical enrollment has gone up the last three years. I expect in the fall, we'll have over 70 students from Acton. Admissions and enrollment overall, for many years, people were concerned about the enrollment at Minuteman, especially in light of investing in a new facility. We have already exceeded the design capacity of the building. The building was designed for 628. We currently have 635. This fall, we'll have close to 700 students. And most of those application increases on a percentage basis are coming from in-district This is a look at, we had 41 applications from Acton this past year. 35 were eligible. That means they completed the entire application. We offered admission to 35 and 30 have confirmed that they'll be coming as freshmen entering Special ed enrollment continues to be high at Minuteman. About 46% to 48% of our students are receiving some sort of services on an IEP. This is Acton's preliminary assessment broken out by components. The minimum required contribution, there are some students from Acton attending another vocational school, so there's a choice adjustment. Transportation, you can see that the building project debt, which is $450,000, has been excluded by a previous vote of Acton Town Meeting. So, all the debt and all the operating expenditures are about $2.19 million. That's an increase of $450,000 over last year. Some assumptions we've made in revenue, I'll point out here that we are using increasing amounts of out-of-district tuition. As this increase in in-district enrollment continues, which we expect it will and it is, we will be getting less and less revenue from non-member communities. So, we're trying to use it appropriately now to keep our assessments down. Again, I mentioned some of the, what we have assumed COVID may be with us. Let's hope it's not, but we have to prepare to pivot to remote learning again. And again, we're looking at cost-effective ways to increase the design capacity. Our athletic fields are on schedule. We're putting aside $168,000 a year to replace the fields. Our photovoltaic installation is completed. The cutover is this week. It guarantees us $2 million of MSBA reimbursement. OPEB is, we're just chipping away at it very not effectively enough. In FY25, our contribution will go from $50,000 to $60,000 a year to $400,000 a year. And our overall budget is up 8.4%. Again, this is a review of the preliminary assessment for Acton. Our overall budget summary and the total assessment is up about $450,000. Thank you.
Thank you. What is the recommendation of the Select Board?
The Select Board heartily endorses this article.
Thank you. The recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Vocational education is not inexpensive and preparing students for careers that include current and future technologies are something that this community embraces. Acton students have embraced this. The Finance Committee supports this warrant article.
Thank you. Are there any members of the meeting wishing to speak?
There are none at the microphones out here, Madam Moderator.
None in here, so we will vote. This requires a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye. All who are opposed, please say nay.
It's unanimous here, Madam Moderator.
It is unanimous here as well.
Thank you very much.
The motion carries. Thank you.